Okay. Today is Thursday, May twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three, and we call this meeting to order. Ms. Six, can you please take a roll call?
Ms. Berger? Townsend? Ms. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Yeah.
Ms. President?
Okay, thank you. I'm looking. Is there any dissent to the agenda?
No.
Seeing that the agenda is approved. Item four point oh, election of board officers. So let me, thank you all for being here today. It's in a critical, important day. It is the last day of school. It's also our last sort of commencing meeting as well. And to bring you back to the last meeting, we tried to get some business done, and one of the the big pieces of business was doing our election of the our board officers. We were unsuccessful in that endeavor. There's a conversation around a temporary measure around a co-presidency. And then the board made a motion to have two directors collaborate and come up with some actions in terms of how that could work. And just to be clarified, that is a temporary because eventually we want to get to the traditional model of president, vice president, but right now the board needs to get started in terms of some business we have to, we have to complete, and we need to get some business done today as well, too. So we did have that meeting, and last week on May seventeenth, I did convene a meeting with Director Kendrick and Director Graves, had a conversation about how the co-presidency could work in the short term and came to agreement around some of the items. That information has been shared with the board. It's also been shared on the website for public consumption, and that was tabled. So we're back today to continue that conversation. So with that, I'm looking for some motions for presidents or for co-presidents from the board.
I'd like to move that we have co-presidents of Irene Kendrick and Carol Graves for short term.
Second that.
Okay, seeing a second. Is there a discussion?
Yes.
Hey, Director Townsend?
Wouldn't forget. All right.
We can't, we can't hear you.
Okay, on April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty three, I was sworn in and stated that I would uphold Missouri and US laws. On April twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty three, the board had training on ethics. Board policy requires that we follow, board policy, BBF requires that we follow Missouri and US laws. Besides not being ethical or supported by laws, I personally found no one in the community that actually supports the idea. I've been told it's been illegal. It was stupid, outrageous, ridiculous, just to have a few. Even the local NEA is not in support of a co-president. That's the letter that we have.
Continue on.
Okay. This is why it's, this is why I've always strived to fill any board vacancy as soon as possible. It is a hard lesson to learn, but in general, you don't have to like a decision for it to be the correct one. Now we have no way of conducting business by state statute and by board policy. The president chairs the meeting. In the absence of the president chairing a meeting, the vice president chairs. In the absence of the president and vice president, and a quorum exists, then the quorum picks who chairs the meeting. After researching for about ten minutes, I found that under Robert's rule, Robert's rules of order for small boards, when the chair and vice chair is not present, the meeting is opened by the secretary, and then a president pro temp is elected to run the meeting for that day. Now we have no president, which means we have no, no way of doing business. Yeah. And we cannot conduct business, even though we cannot conduct businesses way. I though, and though I support Carol Graves as position for precedent, she is not the leader of a caucus or a group, as some maintain. Each director has to weigh in all their information and make the decision on their own. I personally don't look for a, look forward to a headline that says Hickman Mills chooses to violate state statutes. I don't believe that would be a good look for us.
Thank you, Director Townsend. We have others who are interested. I'll get a speaker's list here. Let me see who wants to speak. Everyone seems, okay, Director Graves?
Good evening, audience. On April the twenty fourth, I sent a email out to the board members and shared with them that I was not in favor of the co-presidency, and that's because of the statues, and that's because other stakeholders were telling me that, well, I don't think that's a good look. I think Mr. O'Beane has tried to step in and help the board, but in reality, he should not be doing it at the board. He's not an elected official, and it's, it's almost as if we would be telling him we're going to run the school. What needs to happen is the board needs to come up with a definite date to say we are going to hire, I mean, we're going to vote on a president and a vice president. And, and that means that we're here till twelve o'clock at night. That needs to happen because this particular model, it, it's, it's not a model that any other district uses, and it's just not a good look for us. We should be able to come together and decide who we want to, to lead our board, and, and I want to say this. I'm, I'm very concerned at, everybody knows whoever the, whoever has the most people on the board, they control the board. That's just something that you know, okay? They control the votes, the outcome, and so there have been times where I've sat here and I've vied for positions, but I had no control over the vote, so you just have to go with the votes. I've never been in favor of this. Because why, why don't you have a president invite? I mean, that's just the way it should be done, and the board has to come together. And I've been in, in board meetings where we were electing a vice president, and we just went back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. I think that was when Mr. O'Beane just came, and the board has to do that. The board has to come together, and we need to say that we're gonna have, we're either gonna elect a president and vice president, or we're gonna fill the vacancy so that we can function. There's a lot of work that the board needs to do. So when we're not functioning, we're not getting the work done, and who suffers? You know, our stakeholders and also our kids. So that's where I stand. I want the board to commit to a time, a date where we can have a special meeting or open meeting. It doesn't matter to me, but we need to elect a president and a vice president, and if the votes are so hard to get, then we need to fill the vacancy. And so again, that, that's my position, and I, I think Mr. O'Beane was trying to help the board, but the board needs to come together and say, this is what we're gonna do, and if we're up till midnight, we, we need to do that. That's just something, and I'm hoping that every board member wants to do that because I just don't think that this co-president thing is, is a good look, and I can't think of a reason why we can't come together. For the past year, we've done well as a board. We, we, we voted together. We've worked together, and so I, I don't know why we can't decide who, who we want to be a president and vice president. The president doesn't necessarily tell, the president is one vote, just like everybody else, and that's it. And so I'm hoping that my other board members will realize that there's something that we need to do, and we need to set a date so that we can get that done. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Graves. Director Coleman?
Yes. I would like to say to my fellow board directors, after talking to and reading emails from several of our constituents, I am of the opinion that we, as board directors for Hickman Mills School District, need to come together as one, work together as one, and elect a president and a vice president. That's our job. That's what we were elected to do. We need to do this in order to govern Hickman Mills School District successfully. Right now, we are out of compliance with the law, Missouri State Law one, two, one, six, two, point three, zero, one, RSMO. We're out of compliance. Both the HMNEA and the MSBA strongly advise us to comply and elect a president and a vice president. We took an oath to follow the laws of the United States and Missouri, and we should not disregard the law and do what we were elected to do. And I thank Mr. O'Beane for trying to step in and chair our meetings, but he is not a member of the board. He is an employee of the board. He is not an elected official, and it's not appropriate for him to chair our meetings. So I strongly urge the board to come together as one, elect a president and a vice president, and try and fill the seventh seat.
Thank you, Director Coleman. I see Director Burger. But why don't I just go right down the line? Let me go right down the line. Director Kendrick? Okay, Director Burger?
Yes. I hear you say that you would like to have the board come together and work together, and that might have been possible before the last minute meetings and the manipulation that was tried to get Clifford Reagan on the board, calling for him to resign so that he would be available to be appointed because to manipulate and control the vote to elect the president of the board. In my opinion, that was not working together. I felt like I was manipulated and that there was no discussion with the complete board, and that is why I support the co-presidency until the board can develop trust and working together for common goals, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Director Burger. Director Wright?
I just have to kind of echo a lot of what Director Burger just said is this board, and one of the reasons I ran for the school board is because the district always ends up in the news. And I think it's time that we, I, I agree, we should elect a president and a vice president. I just think that we need to be very deliberate about that and make sure we're getting possibly some newer faces and leadership in order to make sure that we are running the district appropriately and that we aren't ending up in the news because the district's trying to run last minute meetings. We're not getting our meeting notice out. Lots of things that could appear sketchy. I mean, even if, even if legally things were done right, you have to avoid the appearance of impropriety. So while I do support voting for president, vice president, I'll also support the co-presidency. I just think we need some new government, new leadership. Thank you.
Director Kendrick?
Yes, I, I would also echo Director Burger and Director Wright regarding either the co-presidency. For us to either come together with integrity and unity, we have to come to consensus to agree on something. As Director Townsend stated, we may not like it, but for us to move forward is something that we have to do, and unfortunately, the trust has been lost by Ms. Graves' leadership, so that would not be supported by me. So of course, we would be at a split again. So for us to show some form of unity just for a temporary fix, or as Ms. Graves stated, we can be here till midnight to hash it out, but unfortunately, I don't see that moving forward with Ms. Graves' leadership. So I would support electing a vice, a president or vice president, but I would not support Ms. Graves. So for us to move forward, we do have to put our children first, and for us to show proper governance, this may be unorthodox, but it is a innovative way of governing so that we can prove to the community that we can work as a unit, and I would support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Kendrick. I see there's discussion. It'll go go one more round of any other comments. Ms. Graves?
Yes, I want, I want, excuse me. I want to address my comments not to the board but to the audience. Let me, let me just say this, make it very clear. I did not manipulate anything. I sent information out to the board about what I was going to do. They didn't come to the meeting. I made up the agenda that said we want to do the vacancy, blah, 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 blah. I found out later on, they didn't have that on there. I haven't manipulated anybody. I haven't done anything wrong. If I had, I would have been getting information, letters from DSC, MSBA, and other people. So when, when you make those statements, I'm talking to the people that are sitting out here. I've been on this board for eight years. I have not manipulated anything. I sent information out to the board about what we were gonna do at the meeting. Two of the members didn't show up. Mr. Wright was not on the meeting. He wasn't even elected. When we had the meeting, I think there might have been a misunderstanding. Just real quick, this is clarification for the
Ms. Graves, we're getting a little out of order.
Okay, but no, listen, I don't want, I don't want board members to say that another board member manipulated them. That is not true.
Can I, I'm gonna interject a little bit because this is the challenge we're having right now.
Yeah.
It's starting to get personalized, and we're trying to establish a leadership structure so we can get some work done. And right now, we're not getting the work done. I'm gonna say the proposed co-presidency was a stopgap, the pause, so you can have the conversation, figure out how the structure will work, so we can continue to do the work. I'm hearing a lot of disagreement, but I'm not hearing any suggestions. People are complaining about what's not right, but no one's giving any suggestions. So I'm gonna pause, I'm gonna pause for recess for a minute to give the board an opportunity to reflect, and then we'll come back, and maybe people will have some ideas.
But you allow them to say what they want, and then when I get on, you cut me off. They're telling them that I'm, and that's not true. Okay, and it's not, and, and please, you know.
Ms. Graves, this is your second round. I was gonna give everyone a second round, but I'm pausing it because I see the temperatures are getting up. I want the board to reflect that we can come back.
Allow me in front of the public.
We're calling for recess five minutes, and then we'll return, continue the conversation. It's Thursday still, May twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three, and we've just recessed with the board, and we're gonna continue our regular meeting. A few little changes are gonna happen. We are gonna skip the election of the board officers at this time, but I, Ms. Kendrick is going to be chairing the rest of the meeting. And before she starts, Ms. Graves would like to make a statement.
First of all, I do want to apologize just for my behavior. You know, I I've just never, it's never happened to me in a board meeting where someone made remarks about my leadership, and that really bothered me, and so you know, we've, we've struggled this part of the year with our elections, and so because our constituents and many people have been talking about the president and vice president, that was something that we wanted to try to get done. But we met last Thursday, me and Ms., Mr. O'Beane and Ms. Kendrick, and agreed that she would run the meet, she would run this meeting, and I would run the next meeting. So what happened, I, I, I really got upset because I knew she was, you know, I agreed for her to run the meeting, and I just, it was difficult for me to sit here and listen to some of the comments that were made about me. So anyway, I want to apologize to our audience and those that are on Zoom. That's really not my, 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 that's not, really not my character, but it's you know, quite distressing when you read in the paper about you plotted to put somebody on, and, and that just bothers me. But anyway, with that being said, we, we're already behind, so please forgive me for my behavior. I'm sorry, Ms. Hendricks, and you know, for my outbursts, and if you're wrong, you're just wrong. I don't care who you are. So I'm gonna turn it over to her to conduct our meeting. Thank you.
We're, we're gonna move on to consent items, five point one. I would just need an approval of the policy of the consent items, BDDG. Looking for a motion for approval.
Question, do we, do we have to table the motion that was already made that so that we can move on with business because we had a motion regarding?
Yes, that tabled is, it is tabled.
Okay, we don't have to.
Yeah.
Table, okay.
I move to approve the minutes policy BD.
We have point. Consent items, five point one.
Yeah, I think she's asking for motions to approve consent items.
I motion to approve consent items, five point one, policy BDDG.
Second. Ms. Hicks, could you call a roll call?
We don't need a roll call.
We don't need.
It is, it is a motion, so we didn't need to approve it.
Yes.
This is gonna be a roll call.
Ms. Ms. Graves, second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Townsend? Ms. Burger?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Abstain? I wasn't present for most of those meetings. I think it's inappropriate for me to certify minutes, probably.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
All right, and we're moving on to the pillar of the district, Superintendent Comments, six point one.
Thank you, Director Kendrick. Could I get you to put up the website, please? A couple of items, just wanted to share with you. I think this, it'll, the screen will scroll through it. We did receive a distinguished district award this last couple of weeks, and I think we might have sent that out through social media, but I wanted to see that on our board website, so people would kind of recognize that. Of course, we're here to the board meeting. Today is the last day of school, so congratulations to all our staff out there who've made it through, and our students, of course, we're excited to start the, the summer months, and, but we do have one school that's gonna start right away, Ingalls, right? They've got extended school year, so we're gonna get a chance to keep the learning going with, with that particular group. The other item I wanted to acknowledge, I think this should be coming up on the screen any minute. There it is. It's Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, May is, and I wanted to make sure that we recognize that and wish everybody who recognizes and celebrates in our families in those areas that we do recognize them in the, in the Hickman Mills School District. With that, I think those are my comments. I don't think I have anything else. Director Kendrick?
All right, any questions or comments regarding superintendent's board? We're moving on to seven point, seven point one, bargaining agreement. Casey?
Good evening, board. First item I have for you is the collective bargaining agreement with AFT Local sixty twenty three. AFT represents three of our key employee groups in the district, our secretary of clerical staff, our custodians, and our paraprofessionals. Donna Brown serves as the unit president and is who we engaged in collective bargaining negotiations with this spring. Before you is the finalized agreement. Three key points on there, much like we made a commitment to improve the salaries of our teaching staff and completed that process this fall. We did the same for all other staff. So on the memo, you will see the key highlights for each of those groups. We've made another investment in improving our paraprofessional salary schedule so that over the past four years, the starting wage for a paraprofessional in the district has increased by thirty percent. The secretary clerical salary schedule will see an overall increase by twenty percent, and the custodian buildings and ground salary schedule will increase on average eighteen point six, anywhere from fifteen to twenty percent. Overall, the investment in the, the financial packages are just about a million dollars in increased salaries for those three groups for the next school year. The unit did not propose any changes to the agreement as written, and the district did not ask for any changes. So the agreement will be a two-year agreement with the new salary schedules being implemented this year and staff receiving a step, and then also a step for the twenty four, twenty five school year. Any questions or discussion?
Board, any questions or discussions for Casey?
Casey looking for a motion?
Looking, yes, looking for a motion. It's at the bottom of the memo there. Superintendent recommends approval of the collective bargaining agreement with AFT Local sixty twenty three for the twenty three, twenty four, and twenty four, twenty five school year.
You scroll up, but yeah, scroll to the bottom where it says recommendation.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
I move that we approve the collective bargain agreement with ATF C Local six twenty three for the twenty, twenty three, twenty twenty four, and twenty four, twenty twenty five school years.
I second it.
I moved a second. Ms. Hicks, could you call a roll?
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Burger?
Aye.
Ms. Kendrick?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Ms. Graves? Karen, pick so?
Congratulations.
Yeah.
AFT.
AFT, be excited. Thank you. Let me, let me also give my congratulations to our staff or Mr. Klapmeyer and Ms. Wiltzy and team who did a lot of work behind the scenes and crunched the numbers and also doing the negotiations, and I think we've got a really good result. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is HMNEA, our parents as teachers unit. Again, we engage in conversation. They are a small unit of just five members, so we actually bargain with the whole group, not just an executive leadership team. We sit at the table with all of them as we go through this process each spring. We did come to agreement with both parties. Again, no language change to the agreement, either recommended by the unit or the district. The proposed salary increases eighteen point five percent for the new salary schedule for the twenty three, twenty four school year. Additionally, the current schedule for PAT only has fifteen steps, and so we have at least two members that have already been maxed out on the final step, so we're adding, the proposal is for an additional ten steps to be added to that salary schedule to go from fifteen to twenty five. And also, come to your agreement for that staff to also receive a step for the twenty four, twenty five school year. And the recommendation from the superintendent is to approve the HMNEA PAT unit collective bargaining agreement for the twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, twenty five school year.
Looking for a motion?
Director Kendrick?
Oh.
Your motion, motion.
A motion, yes, I think, Ms. Burger, Director Burger?
Well, I'll make a motion, but then I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, I move that the collective bargaining agreement with HMNEA parents as teachers for the twenty three, twenty four school year be adopted as presented.
I second it.
Now, any discussion?
Director Kendrick?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, you mentioned that you meet with the five parents as teachers, so they're actually not part of the teachers local that
Correct.
with Jessica Sweet as the president. Is that true?
Correct. They fall under, so the way it's Correct. They fall under, so the way it's been structured is that the unit falls under the HMNEA umbrella, but they were actually a recognized unit back years ago and have collectively bargained since the early two thousands as a unit. Yes, yep.
I have a question.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no chart, pay chart on here.
Oh, it, yeah, it will be, theirs was finalized a little late, so you will find it when you look in the preliminary budget under the salary schedules. It will be in there in that one for approval. Yes.
Fifteen to twenty-five.
Yes.
And does the the top out pay, is it the same as it was when it, what's the difference between fifteen and twenty?
No, so when we constructed and added the steps, the way the jump, the percentage jump between each step was just continued down for the additional step. So whatever we had already agreed to between the increases from year to year, we applied that same increase as we built down the new ten steps. Yes.
Any other questions?
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Berger?
Aye.
Ms. Kendrick?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Thank you, board.
That was part of the seven point, seven point two, seven point three, Ms. Wiltsey, our financial update.
This is the budget variance report, financial update for April. You'll see that we are in green for the revenue. If you can scroll down for me a little. And also in expenditures, go to the next page. So our fund balance is setting at a forty point zero seven, that's what I looked at, a forty point zero seven. So just scroll down just a little bit more, you'll see how we came up and what the numbers, and this is all budget related. So I'm, I think I'm good with that. Does anyone have any questions on the financial report, the budget variance report? So I need a recommendation for the May financial update to be approved.
Or could I get, I'm looking for a motion to approve. Can you scroll up or down so we can see motion?
I move, oh, I'm sorry, the May financial report.
May financial report.
Just the May financial report.
Yeah, it includes the budget variance report, the contracts for the month, and then also the bills that were paid for the month. So all of that's included in the May financial update.
So Shelley, can you just repeat exactly what your motion is for them to approve?
Yes, we are requesting the superintendent's approval of the May twenty twenty-three financial update.
If I can get a motion to approve the May twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three financial report.
I move to approve seven point three financial update, April twenty twenty-three policy D I.
I'll second that.
We moved to second, Ms. Hicks, if you can call roll.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Berger?
Aye.
Ms. Kendrick?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Sixo?
Moving on to our. Is this?
Seven point four.
Seven point four, the salary chart, budget and salary chart.
Thank you. So everyone's excited to see. Well, this, this is the preliminary budget, so very preliminary, just saying. So you'll see that the number is the same, the forty point zero seven four, so I'm using the same numbers as we are having right now. As the salary charts are changing, there's a lot of movement, so I am still working on that. But, so this is just the preliminary budget. If you can scroll down for me just to down there. And you'll see this is the budget summary where what was just on the budget variance report, we had started the year with twenty-nine million. We're projecting to end the year at thirty-four million. And then, of course, this is the salary charts and the contract list. And we can pull up the salary charts. So this is just a copy of all the salary charts, all the updated salary charts going into twenty-three, twenty-four. So if you'll scroll down, they're in alphabetical order, so you can find the different salary charts as you go down. So those, and we're wanting those to be approved this evening, so if we can go back again to the preliminary budget and the contract list is just a running list of contracts and the new contracts that we're wanting to do for this year, so. If you come down just a little bit farther, so the recommendation is for the approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four preliminary budget, the twenty-three, twenty-four salary charts, and also the twenty-three, twenty-four contracts.
Looking for a motion to approve the superintendent recommendation?
I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation for the budget and salary.
And contracts.
Seven point oh.
Preliminary budget and salary contracts.
Preliminary budget.
I'll second.
Salary co, salary charts and contracts. No?
Yes, got it. Yeah, that's right.
Yes, it's been moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Townsend?
I was looking at the stipends for activities. Are the blanks mean we have no one that are doing those positions or, because like it says, you got head, head coach track, assistant coach track, they've got something, but then you got head coach, head soccer boys, there's nothing there. Do we not have a head soccer?
At the time that I uploaded this, there was a vacant position in there, then that's where it was. They may have hired someone.
Okay.
By the time I uploaded this, that was a week ago, but at the time that this was uploaded, those positions were not filled.
That's why it's preliminary.
That's right.
All right.
Any other discussion, questions?
Director Kendrick?
Yes, Director.
Are we supposed to be able to click on the contracts link and have it open up?
Yes. It's on the board docs. I clicked on it, so.
You do?
Will not allow you now.
Is it not working? There were attachments in board docs that can be clicked on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's broke down by departments, so you'll see that you have the business office and operations and CNI each had their own tab on that contract list, so.
Do you still want to access it, Director Berger, or?
I'll get with you later.
I mean, I don't know if we had it pulled up or not. Okay. All right.
If you can call, roll call.
Ms. Berger?
Aye.
Mr. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Ms. Kendrick?
Aye.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Sixo?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiltsey.
Thank you.
Uh, just, just to clarify the process, you've received the preliminary budget. Ms. Wiltsey will come back in October with the final budget. Right? That's when everything will be finalized. That's where you'll have all the numbers.
Into September, yeah.
Into September, October, and then you'll get a chance to finalize, and she'll have all the numbers from over the summer included in that.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to seven point five, our facilities update.
Dr. Murkison and team.
Good evening, board. I'm here tonight to present you the twenty twenty-two bond and facilities update. I'm joined by HTK, Mr. Gordon, Scott, and Ashley. All right, a copy of the strategic plan, we're going to talk about pillars A and B, which is the district and schools. Focus area three, business, and focus area six, student safety. Good news, twenty twenty bond, both out summary. All elementary schools have received construction of the secure entry renovations. We have gymnasium renovations, restroom renovations, Truman and Santa Fe completed their projects this year. Rita Markley had all their floors completed with that resonant flooring that you like so much. Outdoor learning spaces at several schools, Burke and Ingles. This summer, the classrooms at Truman will be completed. Punch list is ongoing. Ruskin, main office and secure entry was completed, gymnasium, locker rooms, athletic fields, cafeteria and theater renovations, as well as restrooms, and punch list is still ongoing. Now you get to see the pictures. Look at the before and after pictures of the auditorium, the cafeteria, uniform restrooms throughout the district, uniform gymnasiums. As you can see that we have colorful gymnasiums now that match the school's colors. Ruskin, main office, cafeteria, theater room, auditorium, and the front area going to the theater room, as well as the outside facilities.
That looks nice.
Yeah, it really does. So when we go do our visits in June, be ready to be wild. All right, so now we have our construction budget update.
We had to go in, do a little investigation to make sure there was no asbestos in the tunnels. Discovered there was no additional hazardous materials in there. So it is in the final stages. We're currently in the process of demolishing all the hardscapes, so sidewalks, asphalt parking lots, and then the existing slab, and then we'll regrade that, hoping to be done with that by the end of next week. And then we should have a permit in hand for Simington, and we will begin demolition of Simington directly following the conclusion of Johnson.
Did you get, did you capture video of the demolition?
I think we do have some. I'm not sure. I know what the communications director was out there to take some pictures and stuff, so.
So just quick, the demo was Johnson?
Yeah, Johnson is the one that is basically at, basically the slab. We, all the walls, anything vertical is gone. We just had to pause at that point because there were some tunnels under the, that school, and we wanted to make sure there was no hazardous materials in those tunnels. And now they're in the process of removing everything from the slab down. Any other questions?
Okay, give you a quick update on the architectural process. We're kind of working on three different fronts right now in different stages. The first project we are queuing up is the warehouse, and Ashley with McCown Gordon gave you an update on the the numbers. I just visually wanted to throw some images up here so you could see where we have gotten to. And in terms of process, we have submitted our plans, site plan to the city. And we've also got our building permit application into the city, so those are both in process, getting comments, we're getting some feedback from them and making the adjustments that they have required. It is out to bid for all the other packages now for concrete, for site work, for, you know, lighting, mechanical, all those types of things. So soon those will be receiving bids, and then contracts and material procurement will follow through the summer. And then construction slated to start in late fall and then go straight through for five to seven months and should be built and ready for occupation at the beginning of next year. Couple images there just show you some of the construction documents, a lot of little words. Next slide. Next project in the queue is the Real World Learning Center and Community Meeting Space and Board of Education Meeting Space as well. So that is the current pinnacle building that you guys have purchased and are continuing to invest in. So we've got some programming that's been taking place with our different pathway leaders and administrations. We've got schematic design that we're currently finishing up this week, so we should be ready to release that for cost estimation and for presentation to the administration. And then continuing on the heels of that with our design development, getting more into the weeds, getting to understand how those different spaces function and interact with one another. You see a kind of a concept layout there with some different colors of spaces that we're working on connecting with one another and detailing out, and then construction documents will be the next following couple of months, and then on to the same process with bidding, contracting, procurement, and then into construction, so it's well on its way. Next slide is Burke Elementary School, so this would be repurposing this school for elementary use again and giving it a nice facelift, so it looks like a new facility. We've been going through some conceptual design test fits, doing some cost estimate checking. I've also been out in the field doing extensive research on all the current status of, you know, floors, ceilings, and walls. We were lacking some existing drawings, so we've had to create our own to build a a model in three D in our our system, so we can document that properly. So that's what we're going to be working on here through the end of this month is more the programming, understand what spaces go where. You can see a diagram there of the beginnings of that, just understanding what can fit in what spaces. And then our schematic design will follow next month with getting a little more detailed and understanding some more specifics on that. Next slide.
Right, we have some safety upgrades that we're working on throughout the district. Our first pilot school will be Ruskin that we're going to start the safety upgrades in. We're going to enhance the communication tools, door monitoring and access controls, and upgrade the camera systems throughout the district. Safety assessments have been done. We have a safety committee that meets every other month to determine what is needed throughout the district for, you know, to ensure the safety for our students as well as our staff.
Dr. Murkison, before you move on, I know this committee has been doing some really extensive work, working with a lot of vendors across the nation, looking at different samples. And I know you and Mr. Robinson have been visiting different sites. Can you give the board some examples of what you mean by communication tools and door monitoring and, you know, those kind of? I know in the following meetings, you're going to get more specifics, but give them, give them a bit of a teaser in terms of what's coming soon.
We'll say the best thing is the scanner. Students don't even have to take anything out. They just walk through the scanner, and the scanner basically shows where weapon or something that they need to check out a little bit more without even alerting other people. They just pull the student to the side, and then they do the check that way. So it's sort of like airport style. We call, yeah. So we're really excited about that.
Did we get any of the grant? I know I've been seeing in the news, a lot of schools are.
I'm so glad you asked that question because we received the email saying, didn't we apply for that grant? The governor did a first round. Hopefully we'll win the second round. No one in the metro made it.
I saw.
Nobody in the metro, so hopefully we'll get the second round. We definitely applied for it.
So what if we go to Jeff City and?
That'd be nice.
I'll go.
And still being a drive.
Thank you for offering my show for.
Right.
Any other questions?
Keep going.
All right, so the next projected updates, demolition, warehouse being in contracts, where we're learning program in. All right, so the next, uh, projected, the updates, uh, demolition, warehouse being in contracts, where we're learning, programming, design, Burke programming and design, school safety upgrade, project recommendations that will be coming in August. And, um, four project, school tours, the first tour is scheduled for June eighth. Any questions?
Yes, I, I, I did have a question. I know, um, when we toured Ruskin before, I know there was a, uh, we had allotted an area for someone to buzz someone in, so will that be still in effect there? Or will they also be have to, visitors have to go through that process and then our students are still scanning in? Will they have badges to get in or?
You're trying to decide if that's the badge is going to be the best way to do it or the other way.
Yeah, there's lots of really good new technology around badging where you can lock all the doors or get certain things. So our team's been looking at some different options, and I know the, on the slide there, you saw that they're coming. So when they come to do recommendation, you'll get a, a just sample of the different technologies we're going to be using. It's really exciting time to really use technology to support, uh, safety. So thank you for that.
Any other questions, board?
Director Kendrick?
Director.
Um, it's been a minute. Where are we building this warehouse? I don't remember.
Uh, that's on the campus of the current, um, Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Facility. So Martha Truman Road, four zero zero five Martha Truman Road.
So there's enough land there to?
Oh, yeah, there's a perfect spot for it.
Thank you.
Do you have a question, Ms. Coleman?
Oh, I just said I know where that is.
Okay.
So you can drive me then.
Any other question?
Let me, uh, give a thanks to, uh, these gentlemen because they do meet like weekly to discuss all these details. And so there's a lot of data crunched down to these, uh, few slides in terms of doing that. But, uh, we are using the dollars judiciously in terms of moving forward, and we're seeing some visible results on that. So that's great to see. And let me thank, uh, Dr. Murkison, who's, uh, stepped into an additional role and really supporting, um, Mr. Robinson in this capacity. And, and I think you're going to see some good things for our kids coming, coming forward. So thank you all for, for doing that.
Thank you.
Look forward to the updates. Thank you. We're moving on to seven point six, uh, policy updates.
Yeah.
Good evening. Um, for agenda items, seven point six policy updates, you'll see this is, uh, MSBA's 2023 A and 2023 B policies and updates proposed changes combined into one. Um, just as we were getting ready to do the 23 As, they released the 23 Bs, and so we went ahead and added them to this. Um, as you know, uh, the role of the board education is set policy. And so as we do this, um, there are a couple policies on here, and I will tell you, there's quite a few, you, when you go through the entire attachment, if you've had a chance to look at it yet. But there are a few that have to be passed by July first. Those are bolded on the memo page, which is BDDH, uh, public participation at board meetings, IGV, IGCD virtual courses, IGCD A, uh, full-time mocap virtual courses, and KC, community involvement and decision-making, and also a KC plan needs to be into effect as well. Um, so again, I'm not asking for any type of action tonight. This is more of an FYI. Uh, you'll see, I also did give an overview of all of these, um, 2023 A and 23 B in there. And then as you get into the actual agenda items, you'll see everything in green is like an addition or explanation, and things that are in red have been marked out. So there's more, but at this point, I'm going to go ahead and ask, um, our attorney, uh, to go ahead and talk a little bit more about the action steps that we've taken and what the next action steps need to be taken.
Hey, board, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Um, so as Dr. Skinner indicated, there are a few policies that need to be, um, approved by July one. Um, the BDDH, um, public participation in board meetings, that's a change that's, uh, as a result of the law. And, um, all school districts are required to now put in place a process, um, for community members to get items on the board's agenda. And so that, um, process requir- requires, um, community input as well. And so, um, when you go through that packet, you will see the steps that are required, um, by law to, uh, get items on the board's agenda now. Um, that policy, uh, along with policy KC and the plan that Dr. Skinner referenced, um, are also out, um, in the community, and we're now seeking, uh, community, uh, comments from, um, on those. And so, um, uh, members of the, the community have received, um, information electronically that includes those, um, proposed policy changes, and they're asking for, um, comment. And so when those comments come back, uh, Dr. Skinner and I will, will get together, um, and kind of go through some of those and determine if there's some additional changes that should be made to the policy based upon community, um, input. But, um, so when you go through those, certainly, um, pay particular attention to, um, BDDH. And then the community engagement and involvement plan is also a policy. Um, districts are required to implement, um, a policy on community engagement and then also a community engagement plan. Um, both of those also require input from the community, so the community has those, um, now, and we're seeking input on those. Um, so again, I, I encourage you to pay particular attention to those. Um, as with any policy, if you have any questions about those, please feel free to, um, reach out to me so that I can, yeah, answer any questions um, that you have on those changes. With regard to the mocap changes, um, those are really more designed to, uh, make that process easier for, um, students. And so, um, you know, I'll, I'll just, I'll highlight those as ones that you should also, um, pay, you know, a, a little bit more attention to, um, because they have to be passed by July one. Um, the rest of the changes, they're summarized in the first couple of pages, um, or the, right past the memo of Dr. Skitters. There's a summary of those, and so that will help guide you as you go through, um, those changes. If you have questions, please, 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 as always, um, reach out to me. I know, um, you know, if you decided you wanted to, uh, have a committee to, to review these before they come back before you, um, in June, uh, certainly just, uh, let someone know. Um, but, you know, we want to just make sure that you have the opportunity to review, um, all of those and get any questions you have, um, answered before they come back to you for a second read and pass, um, in June.
Could we, oh, like get a copy of this and put it in a, in a notebook for us?
It's on the site if you would like us to, uh, print copies out for you. Okay.
Also, uh, in, in the email, the attachment, did, did it ha- it had the two versions, did, uh, the green and the red out?
So, so the, uh, when I'm not sure exactly which policy you're talking about, but they're, they're basically all the proposed in here. And, um, the one thing that is in here also that's not in green or red is what's out on the website that's being surveyed right now. So when you look at BDDH, you will see kind of the proposal of where it is, um, what, what the public is having, um, input on right now. So when the public goes to take that survey, they click on it in this link and it actually brings up BDDH and asks for input. And we have been getting responses so far. And then of course, you know, these are again, just, um, starter, if you will, kind of draft. And then of course you have the last say in how you go ahead and modify them before they get become, um, adopted.
And could we get a copy of the questions that's been sent out, or do we receive those?
Uh, I mean, the only question was, is please provide any input
Oh, input.
And feedback on the policies.
Maybe we'll. Dr. Skinner, maybe we can just send the, uh, the link to the board member so they can go in and, and let's give them input themselves or see what, what's actually at some point.
It is, it's, it's been emailed to the community, uh, it's been put on the website. Um, so again, we, we have been getting feedback from different, um, community members.
Uh, then, well, no, it's just, this is just a recommendation for the board to receive this. It is up for review, second, first review, and it'll, we'll come back again for second review. And then after that, then the board will take action after the consultation phase to, to prove it. So we'll continue to co- have conversations about this in the next couple of meetings until it's finalized. But we have the two documents that we, we do need to get done for July, right?
That'd be at our.
We can do at our, our June, uh, retreat meeting, we'll do the second reading for those two and hopefully be prepared to take action on it.
Any other questions? Board?
Thank you, Dr. Skinner. And, uh, Dr. Skinner, while you're there at the podium, podium. Um, you know, you, you, Dr. Skinner is at that stage where he's doing a lot of things for the last time, right? But this may not be the last time, but this, yeah, June, yeah, this could be the last time you're doing the first reading of a policy. Dr. Skinner loves policy, so maybe we'll have to get you to come back and work on policy.
Yes.
I'm sure Casey would appreciate some of that.
Yes, I would definitely miss you, Dr. Skinner. We definitely miss you and, um, um, look forward to seeing you in your, uh, vacation outfits.
Question. I told you I was going to ask you when I saw you again, if you had fun?
Have I had what?
Fun yet. Fun, F U N.
Not yet.
Probably not yet.
I'm so glad that Ms. Col.
Question between you.
I, I, I have plans, but I haven't had fun yet.
Yeah. I'm so glad Ms. Col is a good speller. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Right, moving on to our pillar, our schools, uh, eight point one, uh, Freedom Markley.
Right, I asked Principal Parker to come up. Uh, I thought this would be, um, appropriate at, considering the last day of school. And the board was, uh, in attendance for the graduation of our most senior students. And, uh, but we have Ms. Parker as responsible for our babies, our, the junior students. And we had an ELT, had an opportunity to go visit Ms. Parker at her site. We had a meeting, she took us around, showed us the wonderful things, and said, you need to show the board what you're doing with our babies, right? So she could talk on about all the great things that are going on, but she's just going to have a few slides to kind of share with you some of the highlights that have happened with our pre-kindergartners this year.
Well, good evening, board. Thank you for this opportunity. I am the proud principal of the, the building with the new proxy floors that the bond passed. Um, I'm happy to say that we have all of our certified, uh, teaching positions filled for the next school year. And we're going to have fifteen, uh, early childhood classrooms. We've hired two new teachers and they co- come together, uh, with a, um, wealth of knowledge of about twenty years or more experience. So we're proud of that. And next slide, please. Uh, reading, our goal here in Hickman Mills is to, you know, is to prepare our students for kindergarten and beyond. So we have, we're proud to say we have lots of students who are already reading before in, before entering kindergarten. We have a reading interventionalist, and she works with all the students in our school. She pulls them one-on-one or in small groups to work with them with phonemic awareness, letter recognition, and all those, uh, types of things that prepare them for beginning reading and beginning literacy. Next slide. Letter knowledge.
Ms. Parker, can you go back first? For those of us who are not as familiar with, um, the pre-K protocol, I know there's some standards we try to get kids in terms of like learning so many alphabets before they go forward. And you shared some information with us. Could you kind of enlighten the board and the public on some of those accomplishments and how, um?
Coming up, but I.
Oh, is it on that? I thought you said that.
Yes, it's coming up.
Okay.
Because we are very proud of that, don't want to miss that. We set an econom- I mean, economic, academic achievement goal this school year. Uh, what's, we wanted sixty-five, at least sixty-five percent of our pre-K entering kindergarten in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year to know at least twenty-one or more lowercase letters, and the lowercase letters align with, um, the curriculum in kindergarten. And so we're very proud to say that our results, we are sending seventy-five percent of our pre-K students to kindergarten knowing twenty more, twenty-one or more uppercase letters, and seventy-five percent of our pre-K students are going to kindergarten knowing twenty or twenty-one or more of our lowercase letters. So we are very proud of that. We participate in the staff survey called the post survey, and we have eighty to eighty-two percent of our staff actually participating in this survey. So some of our highest pillars are meaningful work. Teachers really think that, that what they do is very important. Their relationship with their colleagues, that says a lot. And the relationship with me as a supervisor. So that gives me feedback in order to improve, you know, uh, my craft as well. The bonus is parent professionals have the highest average score across the pillars for Freedom Markley. That means the parents are really taking that survey as it comes out, and they, and I'm trying to encourage everyone else to take that survey as well. But very proud of our parents. Next slide, please. Our parents also take a post survey that I send out to their, their email or text it to them on their phones. And these are the great things they're saying about us. I am happy with the education of my child has received this year. We got nine point five. My child is happy with school, nine point three. Uh, the school treats my child with respect, nine point three. The school is well-managed, nine point three. My child is safe during the school day, nine point three. So we had, um, parenting in the picture there, we had an ice cream social. We had about a hundred and fifty parents come out and families come out and had made ice cream, little sundaes with all the toppings. So that was great. And so can we scroll next slide, please?
Ms. Parker, that is a scale out of ten, right?
I'm s- yes. Okay, and we had that, these, I'm very proud of our floors. And I heard that you guys were able to pick some of that and look at, and, you know, see it. So this is what our hallways look like, and they are gorgeous. We love them. We had, um, we did our first, uh, annual fundraiser. We have not had a fundraiser at Freedom Markley ever.
Oh, wow.
To, I don't know. Never. Let's look at Teresa to make sure. So we, um, had a, our first world famous chocolate sale, and our parents really sold a lot of chocolate. Kids had a great time. I ate a lot of chocolate. I took some boxes home. So my family ate a lot of chocolate. We each had our favorites. So I'm very proud of that, uh, really got our parents involved and engaged early on. So we're planning to do this. I've already set a date for October for this coming school year, and then we're going to have a spring, uh, fundraiser tour. We're going to tr- sell trash bags. So very proud of that.
Kids say no to little cute faces.
I know. And that's the cutie right there. We also went on a field trip this year to Wonderscope. Uh, and we're very, our school has not had a field trip, and what I want to say is our teachers have not been on a field trip with their students in maybe about ten years. So that was a big goal of mine to get our kids out, get our teachers out, and they had a great time uh, at Wonderscope, and as you can see by the pictures. We had our Freedom Markley in partnership with Link. We had our little pre-K prom on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. And you can see that our kids are well dressed. Up here in the corner, mom and son who are dressed alike. And these two here, they, uh, another father's, her father is not very happy. These two danced the night away, all night long. They did not want anyone, she didn't want to dance with her dad. So parents came out and we had a great time. We ended the school year, positive note, with our pre-K graduations. The pa- every classroom was, they had it in their classrooms. Classrooms were, it was standing, oh, standing room only. And, um, pa- parents just kept telling us how excited they are and asking, why don't you have kindergarten? I'm like, no, we don't have kindergarten. And one parent even asked, can he come back? I just think he would learn. I'm like, no, he has to go to kindergarten. He's school age. So we did a lot of great things and looking forward to next year to doing even more. So thank you for the opportunity.
I have never been in that building, so I'm putting my RSVP in now for next school year.
You're always welcome.
Definitely would like to, uh, come visit your facility and thank you for all your hard work and, uh, those little pre-K children look so gorgeous in their little cap and gowns. And I, I know, uh, as a proud. And I, I know as a proud grandparent, I was happy to see my grandson graduate from kindergarten. But pre-K is even more exciting.
It is. We had parents bringing balloons and flowers and bouquets and it was, it was awesome. It was amazing. And knowing that we're sending them off ready, you know, for kindergarten really makes me feel proud. And our teachers did a lot of work, hard work.
Ms. Parker, thank you so much. We would certainly get the board to come out and visit your location and maybe to read some to your kids. I did get a chance to get some chocolate, but I was disappointed I missed the ice cream social, so I don't know.
We're going to have it again next year. It would be wonderful.
Let me, while I've got you here, I wanted to, this, this is, you're the last, you know, staff item for the school year, actually, pretty much. And I thought this was a great way to end our year, to look at our future. And so thank you for sharing that. And if you, board members, if you remember last year about this time, Ms. Parker was interim principal. Right? And we tried her out a little bit and she knocked our socks off. And now we, she's running the show and we're going through all kinds of firsts for our, our first students in our district. So thank you and please send your, our thanks, so my thanks to your staff. Who I know work, you know, continuously for our kids and congratulations and enjoy your summer.
Thank you. One, one other quick question. How many pre-K students did you have?
We had a not, one ninety-four.
Oh, wow. Oh, that's a.
One ninety-four.
And that's growing.
It's growing and then we look forward to them continuing on in the Hickman Mills School District.
We do too. And I want to take the opportunity to thank everyone, all the leaders, they were very supportive this school year. You know, superintendent being, and I just want to take the opportunity to thank everyone.
Thank you for.
Thank you. Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to our community, community audience comments. Looks like we have Mr. Reagan. That submitted a request to have audience comments. Just remember that we're limited to two minutes and. Two minutes. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, members of the board. A lot of people weren't able to see from six thirty to seven forty-two, the board, what was going on. So that's the reason why I'm here. Seven forty-two is when this came on, at seven forty-two PM today. With that being stated, I want to turn you guys to section BBC, which is y'all's policies. Board Member Reg is Nation. I want to put your eyes to BBE, which is undesired term fulfillment and vacancies. And BCB on your policies and procedures of board officers. As a fellow board member and community stakeholder, I'm embarrassed by some of the actions of the members that have tried to take upon themselves. To keep the community out of the loop by trying to create co-chairs for a two-party president. Now nowhere in the state of Missouri has this ever been done. It shouldn't be done. This has caused a rift between you all. It shows no type of unity at all and it is a shame. That a lot of people care about power and a title and not the accreditation, the safety. And having qualified leaders to help resolve the big three that our district is in need of. I never understood why superintendents would make their administration for their position, administration. Administration go ahead on and reapply for their positions. But in this district, we keep the same people and the same results year after year, a grade of an F. For failure. We open up positions that should be filled by qualified personnel. But because there hasn't been a lot of push by the HR department, we will never fill our positions. It's amazing how we keep the same people. We even promote them. Some of our school buildings are not finished. Our school district has no accreditation. This is four point one and also it's four point one on your closed session for personnel. Four point one also talks about. This, can I see your thing quickly?
Mr. Reagan, you've exceeded your time. You've exceeded your two minutes. Yes, sir, you're at two minutes.
The fastest two minutes.
Seven seconds.
Okay, well, when I started off, I had to explain the reason why I'm here. I would have came here if I was able to talk from my home. Because you gave, you guys gave a hour and twelve minutes that you didn't even show your meeting at all. So that's the reason why I'm here. So I, I think you do, should be able to give or grant me a community member. Since it's been an hour and twelve minutes that you did not let us even see your meeting.
We recessed, sir.
Okay, no ma'am, it wasn't even on. Hour and twelve minutes. And I can ask, you can ask your meeting.
I'm sorry, but we.
Okay, but what I was saying with the meeting, you have a co-chair. This has never been done. I mean, this is, this is really embarrassing as a board member that is sat in those seats. It should never have been done and it causes a rift. You guys have a judiciary responsibility to this district. And you guys need to get together in unity, show as one. And whoever opposes you guys, you need to stop this because this doesn't even make any sense. You have a, you have a six, you have a seven-member board that you are supposed to have. It has not, nothing has been out, sent out for the public about this, for an extra person to fulfill that term. That is in your policy. That's four point one on your agenda today.
Thank you, Mr. Reagan.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And the board is back.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Do we need to go back onto closed session? A motion to go into closed session?
I'm hoping that we go into closed session, presuming to six one oh point oh two one. Sections one, two, three, eleven and thirteen.
I second.
Mr. Wright?
Hi.
Ms. Berger?
Hi.
Mr. Taylor there?
Hi.
Ms. Coleman?
Hi.
Ms. Gray?
Hi.
Ms. Kendrick?
Hi.
Ms. Sixo?
Recess into. Go, go into close out. Thank you, everyone.